We could get some new bingo.
Dan, I've made you the co-host, so you'll be able to share your screen when you're ready. Trevor will be opening the meeting.
Are you ready to go?
Sure.
Is Lisa joining us?
She's logging in right now.
All right, great. I'll wait for Lisa.
Hello, you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. I was calling. Sorry about that. Is that screen being shared?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, perfect.
Do we have everybody?
Looks like everyone from the waiting room is in.
All right, great. Okay, everybody, hello. It is 5:04 PM on April 14th, 2021, and I'll call to order the Joint Board of Selectmen Council on Aging and Building Committee meeting. Today, we'll be discussing or getting a presentation from the Compass Group Architects on the Council on Aging's building study. And today, joining us, we will have the Building Committee chaired by Lisa Pacheco, the Council on Aging chaired by Marion Rylands, and the Board of Selectmen chaired by myself, Trevor Matthews.
So just point of order, I'll open up the Building Committee meeting.
Okay.
The COA might want to do the same for them.
My voice is gone. Opening the meeting for the Council on Aging.
Some things don't change.
I'll read the governor's statement now. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. A recording, a transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings will be posted on the YouTube, Town's YouTube channel and/or the Town of Free Town website, www.freetownma.gov.
You should just record that, so we can just press that button. Thanks, Michael. Thank you. We're ready to go.
Okay, does that mean I have the floor? It's Andrew DiGiallo.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Andrew DiGiallo from Compass Group Architecture. For those of you who don't know me, there's certainly some people on this, in this meeting I have not met before. Also, in the meeting for Compass Group is Dan Newhall, who's working on this. He's working on this study with me also, and he is controlling the presentation. So today, over the past few months, Dan and I have been working on the study. Well, we, the basis of the study so far has been, we've gone to the COA, measured and drawn the existing building, studied the existing facility, and we met with some members of the board of the COA, the COA Board, to discuss their program and their needs. So what you see on this first slide is the aerial view of the COA. You can see where the current septic system is located. We've made note of that. So go ahead, Dan, we can skip ahead. So this slide is really, shows the assessed value. This is from online. They have the buildings assessed at 227,500. This is important when you are doing a code analysis of a building, especially with accessibility issues with the Mass Architectural Access Board. What's important is the value of the structure and not of the land, just the structure itself, which is highlighted and read in this slide at $220,500. Go ahead, Dan. So here's the, we measured and drew the existing lower-level floor plan. It currently stands at 2,196 gross square feet. That's including the new cooler freezer. And without the cooler, new cooler freezer connector and freezer itself, it's 2,084 square feet. This building was constructed out of three modular units. You can see the column lines cutting down the center of the building, and then it intersects to make a T of columns, which makes the hall a bit, these closely spaced columns makes it difficult to meet in this hall and set up tables sometimes. The reason being that it was modular pieces put together. So the building has a proper vestibule, which serves as an airlock, and it is accessible, which enters directly into the main hall. On this level, there are two toilet rooms currently listed as unisex. One of them meets handicap code, one of them doesn't. The one on the left does not because of the proximity of the wall in front of it or when you're exiting and entering. The one on the right, as it's shown on the screen right now, does meet it. There's also a room that would have the proportions of an office downstairs, a door leading into the stair that would get you upstairs. I'm sure you all know this building has entry on two levels. There's a grade change of approximately eight feet between the upper level and the lower level. We'll refer to the, the two levels as upper and lower for the purpose of this meeting. The, there's a kitchen on this level, which you can see, it's an existing kitchen. We won't get too much into that today as we go through. And the recently added freezer cooler with the connector. The, this space is currently heated with through-the-wall propane units with actual combustion at the units, and the building does have some window air conditioners. So let's skip to the upper level. Here's the upper level, standing at 1,924 gross square feet. So the building total is 4,120 gross square feet, all in. This upper level is admin and business offices, also a lodge, a good-sized recreation room, where currently is a billiards table that also serves as a meeting table and some other functions. I've had some meetings in there in the past. An office that is about 13 by 13 that is currently used for food storage, for them to run their food pantry out of, a lodge office, another office, and a reception area where there's also a station for the clerk who would sit. So there's entries at each end of the building on this high-grade side. One, you would enter into the reception area. One, you would be directly into the recreation room. Stacked above the toilet rooms below are toilet rooms that again, it would, they're listed as unisex, but it does constitute a male and a female for plumbing code reasons. And next to that is, I guess you'd call it a kitchenette for service, a small break room. Go ahead, Dan. This is the existing elevations as it is today that you could see up top. That's the northeast elevation, which you would consider the main entry for the lower level that would enter into the hall. To the right, to the left, you can see the new freezer cooler with the connector. And on the bottom of the page is the existing southwest elevation, which would be the two entries to the upper level, which on the left would be the entrance into the recreation room. The right would be the entrance into reception. Go ahead, Dan. These are two side elevations, the existing southeast, which has the freezer cooler shown on it. You can see the grade change and the retaining wall, which was slid back for the freezer cooler project. And the existing northwest, on the other side, which you can see the door that goes into the hall, providing another means of egress out of that space. Go ahead, Dan. So on February 23rd, I met with several members of the Council on Aging Board and the building official, Jeff Chandler, and we discussed their program, how it functioned, and how things were organized and what might be lacking. This table sums up their program. On the left, we, you can see what we call the existing space. The first column is the existing space. On the lower level, we have the hall, which is 1,069 square feet. The kitchen, which is 302 square feet. What we're calling the office is 110 square feet. The vestibule that you enter into is 107, and two toilet rooms, one at 47 and one at 56. That's a subtotal of 1,0691. Now, that wouldn't match the number yet before, because this doesn't take into account the stairway, wall thicknesses and things like that. That will be put in by the grossing factor below. On the upper level of the existing, there's the recreation room, which is 474 square feet. The food storage room, which is 180 square feet. Office 1, 275. Office 2, 169. Office 3, 89. The reception area is 117. Two toilet rooms, both at 63, and another storage area over by the recreation room at 17. So I'm going to have, I'm going to, I can read this other side on another screen. Oh, you know what? I can get rid of that. As I could see with you people blocking this call. Okay, so after discussions on February 23rd, we established a proposed program that would help to meet their current needs as described. And then we turned this into a sketch as an addition that we'll see later on. But keeping the hall the same and the kitchen the same, we, when you add space onto the building, you can see as we go through this program, we had to do a plumbing fix account according to code, according to 248 CMR, which is the plumbing code in Massachusetts. So with the additions we added, that kicked in one more woman's toilet on the lower level. So that's that one you're seeing at 47. So what we did is, we kept the one that didn't make handicap code or mass AAB code as just a woman's toilet, and then we added another handicap, because they don't all have to be handicapped. So that would bring that into compliance. The storage room remains. Now, we added a gathering function or a day room, a flexible room that would just add more gathering space at 527 square feet. We added an area we're calling food pantry at 348 on that lower level. This would be to run the food pantry out of more storage and better distribution. The people. Then, if we were to do a project that is 30% of the existing total value of the structure and/or greater than $100,000, it would have to come into full handicap compliance. So in this program, we put an elevator machine room and an elevator, a lobby, and a vestibule. So that's what those two items are with an elevator added. So the new subtotal of the lower level would be 2,0738. We did draw this, and we'll see it later on. It will be a little more easier to understand. So on the upper level, we got the recreation room and we expanded it. We added a private consult room. What became evident in speaking with the board members is that there is a lack of private meeting space. And not just meeting space, but also if they're having, offering certain services such as a podiatrist or someone to discuss taxes and anything like that. A more private room that would be easily accessible off of that upper level. A break room or a meeting room. This would be a room that would be set up with tables and chairs that you could either take a break there at lunchtime or you could conduct a meeting. We'd have that double use, because as of right now, the break room, break slash kitchen room does not meet that need. That's the same storage area. But office 1, 2, and 3, so we kept three offices. However, we replaced one and we made it larger. That's what's going on there, and we actually made two larger. Upstairs, even with the additions, there is no need for any additional toilet rooms, and they both met MAB regulations, 521 CMR. So those remain at 63 square feet. Well, we improved the reception waiting room, which is not functioning properly right now. So if people are coming in and have to wait and/or be greeted, it's too tight in that reception area, being shared with a clerk's desk behind that half wall. So we made that larger and came up with a solution for that. And that last item, vestibules, is I added vestibules at the two entries as an airlock, so that you don't open the door and you draw a negative or a positive pressure through the whole building on a cold day. It would be a double-door vestibule. The upper level and the proposed space, 2,282, with a net square foot of, the total net square footage, adding the two up, 5,020. And there's that grossing factor. This is wall thicknesses, stairways, things like that. The grossing factors are about 30%, and that's the total gross opposed area. To solve some of the deficiencies, we came up at 6,709 square feet. So it would go from, in our sketch, it goes from 4,120 to 6,709. Is that clear enough? And does anyone have any questions before we move off the sheet?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So there are entrances on both levels from the parking lot?
Yes.
So that we still have to, you know, if we spend over the amount of money for upgrades, we still have to do the handicap accessible and put an elevator in, even though technically you can get to both levels?
That's a great question. That's an age-old question asked on every project like this. The answer is unequivocally yes. 521 is very clear on that. So you do not need an elevator on a building that's accessed on two separate levels if it's two completely different functions. Then, if there is an interior stair in the building, that automatically kicks in the elevator no matter what. So due to the fact that the building has an interior stair and it is not a separate function, you need the elevator.
All right, yeah, that's what I figured. I just wanted to put that out there, because I've heard people say that before. Maybe we won't have to have an elevator because of that, and just appreciate you clearing that up. Thank you.
Right. Okay. So if that's the only question, we'll go to the next slide. This is a quick table we put together, and you know, it does go a bit deeper than this, but this is a good synopsis of all the major points that we check when we do a code analysis on a building. So the existing building height and construction type is fine. It's in current code compliance. The fire-resistant rated requirements for building elements, no, there is an issue there. The use group of this building is a mixed use. The first floor, the upper level, we'd be considered a B use, which is business in the code, and the lower level would be considered an A3, and that is Assembly 3, which would be a hall like you have there. Now, if the occupant load is 50 or less, the accessory, the assembly becomes accessory to the business. But we're coming up with an occupant load of more than 50, so that it would, especially with the additions, that would make it two distinct use groups. B, business upstairs, upper level, and A3, assembly, lower level. This by code needs a separation of two hours. So the floors and ceiling assembly and the wall to the stairs would have to be rated for two hours, which it currently is not. Existing fire protection, as of right now, the building does not need sprinklers. However, we would recommend a fire alarm upgrade if work is done to the building. Means of egress, it currently does meet the means of egress. However, the ramp and stair need some upgrades. That would be recommended on the exterior ramp and the stair inside. Existing plumbing fixtures do not meet even currently, because there is no service sink or drinking fountain, which the code mandates each level have a janitor's sink or mop sink and drinking fountain. Existing accessibility, no, because of the two-stop elevator and some stair and ramp upgrades. And existing HVAC, no, because it does not meet current air change standards by code. A note below, these upgrades need only be completed if the building is added to or altered and the cost of construction exceeds $68,250. That's 30% of the assessed value that it's at right now. So in other words, if you did nothing, it could stay like this. Any questions on this? Okay, go ahead, Dan. This slide here, it shows where it comes from in the code. Existing use group classification, we have the business B and the assembly A3, like we talked about. The existing construction type is type B construction, not sprinkled. 5B is basically house construction. It's wood-framed, no fire ratings on walls, floor, or roof. Typically combustible materials like wood and the, so the building height, the allowable is 40. Our average height, because of the slope grade is 18, so we'll find there. And this would really be considered maybe a one-and-a-half-story building or one-story. So we have no problem with the size of the building and its construction type. Go ahead, Dan. So fire-resistant rating requirements for building elements. So the billing area for each floor, the lower level without the freezer cooler is 2,084 square feet. The upper level is 1,874 square feet for a total building area of 3,958 square feet. Fire-resistant rated requirements for building elements. That's all that, nothing's required, so it would meet the 5B. However, in Table 508.4, the required separation of occupancy in hours between an A and a B is a two-hour separation. That's the one I talked about between floors. That would require a rating between the upper and the lower level. Go ahead, Dan. So fire protection. So let's talk about the occupancy load. The occupancy load, according to the Mass Building Code, Ninth Edition, the assembly group A3, which is the lower level, we would take the hall area, which is 1,100 square feet, just the hall now, and divide it by 15 occupants, 15 occupants, 15 occupants for each net, 15 occupants, one occupant for a 15 net square feet. So we're simply taking the 1100 square feet that the hall is, dividing it by 15 square feet per occupant, which is prescribed in the code, and you get 74 occupants. Accessory to A3 is five occupants. That'd be the kitchen space and that office. Ground level total of 79 occupants. That's where we exceed the 50, excuse me for one minute. And we need to classify it as an A3 and not accessory to the B. The upper level is business group B. That's 1,874 square feet. That's a very simple calculation, because it's 100 square feet gross for each occupant. So we've got 19 occupants there for total occupant load of 98 occupants. By the way, the way the code comes up with that 15-square-foot net, that's usually for areas where tables and chairs can be set up, but they are not fixed, which is clearly what we have there. Excuse me. Existing fire protection, there is no existing sprinkler system. For this, we have to go into Mass General Law, Section 26G. Automatic sprinkler systems required for buildings and structures totally more than 7,500 gross square feet. Existing gross square feet is 3,958 for this case. Well under the 7,500. So as long as the building does not total more than 7,500 gross square feet after any and all additions that may be added, a sprinkler system will not be needed under Section 26G. So it is in compliance as far as the sprinkler system goes. But again, even if it's not sprinkled, a fire alarm upgrade is certainly recommended. Go ahead, Dan. So existing means of egress. So you then take your occupant load, and then you can go into the means of egress to see if your doors are big enough and if the travel distances are okay. In all cases here, without getting too much into it, it passes no problem. You can see that for the, even with all 98 occupants going out one door at one time, it would have to be 29.4 inches. And the only problem we come up with is that the existing stairwell should be a minimum of 44 inches, although we could probably get around that with an exception. So the stairwell is a little bit shy on the width. However, the stairwell is not part of the egress system. That's why I'm not too concerned about the stairwell. The building meets egress without the stair, because you're able, you have two means of egress out of each, the upper and the lower level, without having to use a stair. So I'm not too concerned with that. So again, we clearly meet the width of the doors. Common path of egress travel in a business occupancy B, common path of travel is distance, that's different than total distance traveled. You have to check two things on egress. You have to check the total distance traveled before somebody's either out of the building or into the next level of separation and safety. So that one's pretty simple to check. It's without a sprinkler system, the, you can go 200, they can travel a max of 200 feet, and we're clearly under that everywhere. Where it gets a little, where it gets a little tricky to check is called the common path of egress, egress travel. That's the maximum distance an occupant is allowed to travel before he or she has two concise and specific ways to get out. So you can only, you can only travel in a B occupancy without a sprinkler system. You can only travel 100 feet before you have to buy two ways for the occupant to get out. And on that second level, the maximum common path of travel And on that second level, you're the maximum common path to travel is twenty two feet. Uh, well under the hundred feet, so we're good there. And then on 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 the uh, the the travel distance, the total travel distance, a hundred feet. Uh, two hundred feet, excuse me, is is for the total. And the longest travel distance for an occupant uh, on that upper level is seventy six feet. Again, well under the two hundred, so uh, the upper level is in compliance, go ahead, Dan. Down on the A three, uh, the uh, I don't need to run through the size, the width of the doors and cars. Because again, we're well, we're 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 fine with that. And then the common path of egress travel now uh, is down to seventy five feet. But the maximum distance. An occupant has to travel in that building on the uh, lower level is only twenty six feet, well under the seventy five feet. And the exit a- access travel distance, the total distance is again, two hundred feet for a non sprinkled building. And the maximum distance traveled is only seventy eight, so yes, it is in compliance with uh, means of egress. So existing plumbing fixture count, we're not going to go through this whole table, but what this table does is. You then go, you then take your occupancy load and go into C M R two forty eight, which is the Massachusetts plumbing code. Table ten ten, and it tells you how many fixtures you need per occupants. Um, for example, uh, uh, you know, water closets, also known as toilets, you can see that female, you need one per twenty. So that um, on, this is, we're on the business level now, we're on the upper level, you can see that uh, one is required. Because we're only nineteen occupants, if you remember. Uh, and there is one existing, so we're okay. Uh, males, uh, the male uh, rest toilet room does not need, you know, you can have more occupants per that, so again, we're good at one. Urinals, you're, uh, once you get over a certain point, uh, you're allowed to substitute male toilets for urinals, in this case, it's not applicable. And labs, sinks, uh, ones required and one is giving. Uh, uh, but however, a drinking fountain, a service sink is required and it's not, that's where it falls short. Go ahead, Dan. So um, I think there's a, uh, so this should say, it's a, the heading is assembly A three. But below that should also say assembly, and that's where the design load, the occupant load is seventy ninety nine occupants. So you're allowed to split that down the middle between male and females, so on a water closet, we need one per fifty for the female. And one, we we have that, we uh, we need one per male, we have that. Uh, we don't need to have a urinal. Uh, and then the labs, we need one per two hundred, in each case, we have that. Again, no drinking fountain or service sink, so um, this uh, should be added in a renovation. Uh, but in uh, other than the service sink and the drinking fountain, the number of toilets is uh, currently uh, in compliance. Accessibility. So Massachusetts, of course, you have to meet the ADA, but there's also the not, the M A A B. C M R five twenty one, which in many times is more stringent and and um, the more stringent always rules. Than uh, the federal ADA. And when you start, this code on an existing building is three point, three point two. The work performed, including the exempted work amounts to thirty percent or more of the full and fair cash value. Uh, there there are different ways where you can come about at the full and fair cash value. Uh, described in five point three eight of the building, the entire building is required to comply with five twenty one C M R. It always starts at the assessed value. And if 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 you think that that is way off, uh, there are some means. To uh, go to their board and agree on a fair assessed value. But for today's conversation, we can use the assessed value. Uh, where the cost of constructing in addition to a building amounts to thirty percent or more of the full and fair cash value of the existing building. Both the addition and the existing building must be fully accessible, so that's where you get kicked in. To bringing the whole building up to code if you spend more than thirty percent. Now, this next number. That I'm going to mention to you is um, totally in flux right now, the 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 construction market is upside down and on its head. Uh, none of our templates are currently working for estimating right now. Because of the current environment of of materials. Uh, what I did is I researched some um. Newly completed COAs, and I also did some uh, basic calculations and. If you're going to plan a public project. Um, for a COA, that uh, right now, the. Uh, square foot prices, believe it or not, are coming in between four fifty and five hundred dollars a square foot. For publicly bid construction. So um, we came up with um, an area of two thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. That would be added uh, in a, in the project, which we'll show you in the drawing. Which would then yield a project cost, let me take a minute to the, make a distinction between construction and project. So a project has two types of costs, it has hard costs and soft costs. The hard costs are basically the construction, the soft costs are. Anything else that would go into that, architectural engineering, uh, legal fees. Insurances, things like that. Um, so while the construction cost would be less. Um, that is what communities are planning for right now per square foot. The value of the existing building, if we were to use the assessed value. We would only have sixty eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to spend, so regardless. Of where the addition cost lands. I can almost guarantee you. There would be more than sixty eight thousand two hundred and fifty eight, two hundred and fifty dollars spent, so. Right now, that five hundred dollars per square foot, uh, really just, um, you gotta be bear with me on that one. And in the next month, I I I have to really study that. And we're going to have to break this apart, uh, to come up with a more accurate price, it did just all over the place. And um, a lot of our software is 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 way off right now, so. Um, but you, but the important number there is at sixty eight two fifty, which we know we would exceed. And and by the way, uh, in that cost above, that one million four ten, um, in a, a two stop elevator on a public project. Uh, right now, uh, with the elevator shaft. The elevator itself and the electrical uh, in the pit and the foundation would be a little, just a little bit north of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so um, as you can see, according to M A A B. If we were to build out an additional two thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. We would have to bring the building into full compliance for accessibility. From five twenty one C M R elevators, this is, uh, I think, we talked about this before when the question was asked. By Trevor, in a multi-story building, in in multi, in all multi-story buildings and facilities. Each level, including mezzanine, shall be served by a passenger elevator. If more than one elevators provided, each passenger elevator should provide with five twenty one C M R. Accessible elevators shall be uh, an accessible route and located within a space which it is intended to serve. Elevators are not required under the following exceptions, so. Why I wanted this in here is the concept of accessible route is you have to make sure that. When somebody parks their car and the handicapped spot gets out of the car. And and comes into the building, you have to provide an accessible route that starts with a parking space. Goes all the way into the elevator and then into every corridor, every toilet room. Everything that's used by that handicap person, it's called the accessible route. Go ahead, Dan. So here's a proposed lower level plan. Where we added, we came out twenty feet i- in the in the front of the building, if you remember that first slide. It makes the most sense to add to the front of this building. A couple of reasons, uh, one is you got some room there. Um, to come out before you start affecting the parking lot. And um, in light, in in light frame construction. You're going to have the same foundation and the same roof for two stories. But but you gotta, it's gonna be a lot of economies that kick in, um, when you build two stories instead of one. Yeah, um, you you'll get a better bang for your buck, so you, if 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 we, if. This building was added to on the front, it would then gain space on both levels. So you can see that, uh, if you're looking at the screen, uh, to the left, uh, this twenty foot addition. It's about twenty, twenty by twenty eight, uh, that gathering function day room that was mentioned. In the, in in the program of of the proposed, and then over to the right. Um, it's a twenty seven, about a twenty eight, and again, it's twenty seven ten and some change. So again, about twenty eight by twenty addition, that would house the elevator, the elevator machine room, and then a nice big room, which. I'm suggesting in this sketch, that it could be maybe the food storage and distribution room. Where um, you would have an opportunity to have direct access in or out. To distribute in both store and the same room without having to go into any other part of the building. Um, the, we, we do have a vestibule and now a small lobby area where. You could get on a centrally located elevator and you could come in and get up to the second floor. Uh, without having to go through uh, any of the hall or any of of the other rooms. So um, that's what it would be on the lower level, let's go to the upper level, Dan. So again, here, now we see the uh, we see the elevator. Uh, to get you oriented, but let's go to the top of the page. Where we had that, um, let's look at that reception waiting area. The idea here is that we would clear out the half wall and make that all into reception and waiting where people could sit. Then uh, could put an interior window in that office number two. Uh, uh, the clerk using that office could see anybody coming in and uh, could talk to them and um. Uh, see what they needed, send them on their way or have them wait. Uh, the other entry, and you can see the two vestibules I was talking about, that uh, would act as an airlock. But on the other side, you'd come in. But um, along that uh, modular bearing wall, we'd put a wall there with a double door. And the recreation room would get expanded by that twenty feet. So that when you come in that door, you're not just walking directly into the recreation room. So recreation room gets bigger and and now it's separated. The existing corridor would remain, the kitchenette would remain, and the office would remain in the front. The two toilet rooms would remain, which uh, uh, do meet current architectural ass, access board standards. However, then we would uh, do some renovations, we'd make a a U shaped, actually a four shaped. The corridor would be shaped like a number four, if you look at that close. Um, in in the center, that would be a a break room or a meeting room with a large table. Um, and then on the other side, that would could be, would be the private consult room. The, there's two offices. Over on the side, the um, one of them is current, that's that, that new one's larger than the one it's replacing. And then there's another room there, it would either be, um, it could either be another office, but right now we have three, and I believe that's enough for my discussions. Uh, this could possibly be a computer commons room, uh, which would maybe be a fun, you know, it'd be nice to offer in the future. Some public computers for uh, citizens to use. Um, go ahead, Dan. Oh, flip back, Dan. So you can see now, the upper level, uh, flip back one more, let's look at the square footage is down low. So uh, the uh, the square footage on this lower level with this addition is. Um, without the freezer cooler is three thousand three hundred and six gross square feet. Uh, grosses to the outside dimensions of the building, go ahead, Dan. Then we'll add the upper level, which is three thousand two hundred and ninety one gross square feet. We'd get a total building gross of six thousand seven hundred and nine square feet. Which is under the seventy five hundred, uh, requiring sprinklers. Go ahead, Dan. So we did a quick sketch of uh, the elevations in the building form that this would take. We're base, uh, those twenty eight foot additions would come out twenty feet. And um, you'd have to be careful of how you add on here with these modular units and what you create at the existing wall, so. Um, an efficient way to do it would be to be, uh, to have two gabled roof additions. And fill in with the entry vestibule area in the center. And you could see how that would look at the uh, on on that front proposed northeast floor plan. Uh, if this ever was carried forward, I would suggest um, uh, you know, defining the entry more. Uh, with a nice roof or a portico, and they could tie that elevation in very nicely. Also missing from this is you would see the elevator shaft penetrating the roof, right to the right of that entry door. Um, I will, I'll make some recommendations on the entry going forward and and put that shaft in. And uh, you can see how the twenty feet is added. On the northwest side, and that's that door that could access that large room that could possibly be uh, the food pantry. Go ahead, Dan. So uh, we then looked at, uh, where a new COA would possibly go if they did a new building, which. Uh, from our program studies would be in the range of about seven thousand square feet. Um, that's that, we took that six thousand and changed and just rounded it off. Um, and then uh, the new construction that uh, the going rate of four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. Uh, would be three million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars project cost, again. We're going to have to, uh, we're going to take these numbers, these cost numbers further. We're just applying uh, square footage costs uh, for this meeting based on what's coming in currently. So uh, we need to circle back on those numbers. So here on Memorial Drive, uh, when the police station was developed, it's a room left to add a new building or buildings. You can see that um, that's a, that that red rectangle is in scale at seven thousand square feet. And you can see the police station under construction, to just compare it kind of in size. And uh, that would be um, the size of a seven thousand square foot uh, new COA building. Um, they also, uh, the study also asked to look at maybe a combined library COA, this would be option three. Next slide, so, but what we're showing here is an L shaped building, now a library. If you take the population of Freetown. And current library constructions with the Mass Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Uh, programming, you would have a building of about seventeen thousand square feet for a library. So if if you added the seventeen and the seven together, you would have a building of about twenty four thousand square feet, that's what's shown in scale. Um, on this drawing, the library is in yellow, the COA is in red. Um, and if it it possibly could, uh, they could possibly share some space where they come together. Such as a community meeting room or or something like that. Um, however, library co- construction uh, is more expensive than COA construction. Approximately fifty to a hundred dollars a square foot, but a twenty four thousand square foot building. Um, by square foot cost of what we're seeing today publicly bid would cost twelve million dollars. And um, that's option three, again, we're going to look at these costs closer coming up. Uh, uh, in the next month, so um. That's a quick, that's a synopsis of, you know, this is just a review, uh, of review of the major points of the study. I I'll open it up to questions or or comments now from anybody who wants to ask one or comment.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, the new building for the COA, um, at the seven thousand square foot with the price tag of four point, four point one, is that what you said?
No, go back there. Uh, three.
Three point one, sorry, three point one, it's one point four for the addition. Um, is that taken under consideration, site, site work?
So Lisa, um, you know, this. Uh, that's where you gotta watch what's going on, um, you know, numbers are fluctuating like crazy. So you you you, it's it's, at at this high level. Uh, you know, you got plus or minus fifty dollars a square foot, so. Uh, you don't know, and you don't know about the variables of the site and whatnot. Uh, going, i- if this was five years ago, uh, the answer would be absolutely. In today's environment, the site works probably about the cost of how much it's escalated in about five years. escalated in about five years. So um, uh, the answer would be uh, probably, and that's what the number suggests, but uh, we're really trying to figure out where these costs are right now, and I need to spend uh, another month on that.
All right. Uh, second question I had, um, option three with the twelve million with the library slash, um, COA, um, you said that there could be common spaces, but have you, um, have you even talked to the library commissioners to ask them exactly what they were looking for, and if they needed a building that big? And um, I know like kitchen would be combined, like there are certain things that could be combined. Um, so I'm just wondering if you had a chance to talk to anybody from the library about anything?
So the answer to that is yes and no.
Okay.
Um, the, I've designed um, a library, and I've worked with the uh, uh, with the board, the library board, uh, the Massachusetts uh, library board. So I've programmed with them, and I've gone through, I, I've, I've gone through a whole grant round process with them. Uh, typically every six or seven years, they open up a grant round process, where you could get reimbursed approximately forty seven percent of the cost. Um, so um, I use my knowledge on the programming to come up with the size of the library based on population and what they look for today in the programming. And um, I als- they also do not get too excited about shared building. Um, like for instance, a town hall and a library, they have done some, um, it, it's not their favorite, and they, they, when they, when you go into a grant round, you get ranked. Uh, so say twenty towns submit the grant round. Um, if, if, if uh, the first few always get granted uh, on, on pure need. Uh, for example, uh, the grant round I was involved with, that one of Dotmuss Branch Libraries was getting taken out by the rerouting of, of a road. So they got put to number one automatically. Now, um, so, but they're not, uh, I don't, and this is just my opinion and my dealings with them. I'm not speaking for them, but I just don't think they're too, uh, that, they don't get too excited about sharing the space. Um, that's, that's been my experience. Uh, and my experience right now is that the funding is way out, and um, I heard they were gonna open up another grant round, uh, to, uh, they're saying the, the funding could be ten plus years out, even if you get accepted.
God bless you, whoever's sneezing, God bless you.
That was me.
Can we go back to the option three for a second, please? I just wanted to see what the difference in the building costs were. So that's a total, do you know what is just for the library? The seventeen thousand times a five hundred?
Yeah, we'd be pretty close to that, uh, a little, probably um, maybe a little bit less than that, but I can't tell you um, uh, how costs have changed over the last six months. So um, but yes, libraries are more expensive than COAs to build for square foot traditionally.
Okay, and can you just go to um, option number one for a second on the bottom floor, please? Um, can, just a suggestion, and I know that this is, you're just playing around with this, but the food storage distribution room, probably on the other side next to the kitchen, and then the gathering function room maybe on the other side. So that's just a suggestion. I think it might be easier. Um, but anyway.
Okay.
That's it for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, I have a comment. Um, I'm on the library planning committee, and we've looked into this before, and we've been rated number one because neither of our libraries are uh, are accessible, and neither of our libraries have appropriate plumbing facilities, and neither of them are very large. And we've been, so we, we've gone to the state and talked to them, uh, they would say that we were number one on, would be number one in that, that uh, part of the list. Al- also, I, I believe that they'll give um, uh, waivers on the size. I, I believe that uh, when Lakefield built their library, they wanted them to be this size, but they agreed to twelve thousand square feet. And I think that, uh, given where libraries are going, uh, well, they'll have fewer needs for shelving and books, and more needs for audiovisual stuff and computers, um, I think we wouldn't have to be seventeen thousand square feet. I would guess more like twelve thousand square feet. And also, we have talked to them about joint buildings, and like you say, they're not excited about it, uh, but there are, they have approved uh, combination COA uh, libraries in Massachusetts. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Sure, and I agree with everything you said. I just need some starting point on this report. You know, this is not a study to design a library per se. It's just, uh, that's where you would start with the square footage. And like you said, yes, waivers, and yes, you could get a smaller program approved, but that would be part of the design process, and not a given either. But I agree with everything you said.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So what kind of timeline would, would we be talking about for our, you know, from the day we broke ground uh, for option one until, you know, the COA was back in that building?
So uh, between uh, design, between meetings, design, uh, construction documents, and bidding, uh, you know, you'd probably be looking at a, you know, five months' process there, and construction, or you know, would uh, be at least a half a year. So you're looking at, i- if, once you start the design process, I would say that the, uh, this would be a, a, a one-year project. And I, if, depending on where the money came from, if it required a town vote, um, that would add even more town, I think.
And then for, I guess, just out of curiosity, for say, option two, for a totally new builds, you know, are we talking a couple of years, or would it be?
Yeah, for sure. Um, if you're gonna start a, a new build, and it's gonna go to town vote, uh, you know, you're looking at a three to four-year timeframe. Um, and if you're gonna do a library grant round, uh, you're looking at quite a few years. I, I, I don't know, if the gentleman who um, is on the library commission, do you know of any grant round they're gonna open up? I thought it was gonna be soon, but I hadn't heard of them.
I had heard it was gonna be one in two years.
Two years?
Yes. However, I had the same concerns that Paul Lubin spoke about. I thought, when you put that drawing up, certainly I don't think that the town of Freetown needs a library that big. The concern that we have, library trustees have, is that down across from the town hall, we get the halfway library, that doesn't even have running water. Okay? We shouldn't even have that library open. And in East Freetown, we have a, a nice library. However, we don't own the building. We can't expend money in there. So that's the, that's the dilemma we're in, and people use the library. A lot of people, a lot of seniors use the library. Now, certainly you know a lot more than I do for construction, but I know that when I grew up to see my daughter in Hanson, they have a joint library senior center. It's beautiful. And I don't think we need a library to the, to the, with the square footage that you were talking about, Andy. And do we have to, do we have to wait for a round? Do we have to wait for a round from, from uh, the state to come?
No, uh, Paul, I agree with you. I, 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 I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm, I'm in agreeance with, like, for instance, I still think that uh, uh, they still look for more stack space than what is needed in today's library. Um, you know, the computer commons, uh, uh, are very popular. Uh, the private meeting rooms, uh, today, uh, you know, we, private meeting rooms are built into the library where uh, tutors can meet students, and you can reserve a room. Uh, there's usually a commi- a community room, and um, that, that uh, all people can use. There's uh, maker spaces where they have uh, three D printers, all, all kinds of programs, and uh, I agree with you. And I don't think that would be the space, um, I don't think that we at Freetown would end up, and I'd be more than glad uh, to meet uh, with the library committee and discuss this, and you know, fine-tune it for the purpose of this report, which the purpose of this report is not to design a library, but um, I would certainly want uh, this report to reflect um, uh, the uh, concerns and the view of um, the library committee. So um, maybe we should meet and um, uh, talk about all this.
I'm screwed.
Hey Trevor, just wanted to make a point, PJ and Kowski here, that procurement is gonna take three or four months. You have to do a procurement for design, and you have to do procurement for construction and general contractors. So those take a little bit of time, too.
Yeah, I guess, what I was thinking about was, you know, what, what is the COA gonna do while we're, while the construction is going on? Right? Like, like, cause it seems like it's gonna, I don't think it'll, they'll be up to continually be in that building during that time. So that's kinda where I was, what I was thinking about.
That would be a decision that would have to be made. Uh, I, I think they could certainly be in it for some of it, but not all of it.
Yeah. And then another question on that. So I'm assuming we'd have to, like, re, you know, change the roof, cause the roof line's gonna be different, correct? Would that require, like, a whole new roof? And for, this is for option one, obviously, and then um, you know, like, will we have to, we probably have to re-side the whole building, I'm assuming, to ma- you know, have a new front, kind of look funny. There's different siding and different parts of it. So is that all kind of part of the, of this construction, the total cost estimates, which I know are totally unreliable right now anyways?
Yes, I, uh, the answer is yes, you would have to at least re-roof the front half of the building. Uh, the opportunity and the scheme we showed you, the, the roof could remain on, on the back half, the um, the high side. And um, with those kind of numbers, y- you should be able to get all that. Um, and um, it's just, uh, the market's extremely volatile. I never, the mo- the market hit an all-time high September twenty-first, and no one would thought it would go any higher. Matter of fact, it came down, and now it's up higher even still. Things like sheet goods, plywood, I just.
Yeah.
Crazy.
I've, I've been told that, like, um, quotes are only good now for, like, fourteen days.
Well, well, I'm working on a project that needed steel barge choice, but the lead time came back at nine months.
Yeah.
It is crazy out there.
Those are.
But there's gonna be a correction, who knows when, but there'll be a correction.
Gotcha.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know what? Wouldn't, wouldn't we be better off having, building a new senior center for the seniors? And the existing senior center, in my estimation, with a little tweaking, not much tweaking, we could turn that into a library. I don't know what Paul Lubin thinks. I mean, he's on the library, but another, I mean, that's a, still a viable building. It may not be big enough for the seniors, but certainly that would easily be big enough for a library for us in this town.
Or just call it whatever we wanna call it, but, you know.
What's that?
I was, we could, maybe not specifically call it a library, maybe like a community center, or whatever we need to call it. I think you're right, though, like, what people, we need this public space where people can go there and, you know, use the computers and, and, you know, have that space.
Well, if you're gonna get state reimbursement, you're gonna have to call it a library.
I just, I guess I was saying that, cause I don't know if it would meet the criteria that we need anyways in that existing building, you know?
You're gonna have upper floor issues with load bearing. It's not, you know.
Man, that's a great point. Uh, books are very heavy.
Why would you have books?
You'd want your stacks on the first floor.
Why would you have books on the upper floor? You have them on the lower floor and have offices up on the second floor.
Yeah.
Right?
It's, it's, oh, Paul, that, that's something that could be looked into. Um, you know, this study, I think, is uh, a catalyst to help to get this to the next level.
Does anybody else from the building committee have any other questions?
Uh, Charlie Sullivan, I have one question for Andy. On um, the COA present, first of all, on the COA, on the present uh, design, have you done any um, oh, program study outside of the discussion with the committee and what they felt their needs were? In other words, uh, as you plan a building, you know, you, you have a program study, and have you done any of that for, like, a community of this size? And planning ahead, it seems like we have a plan there for today, but no plan for tomorrow, so to speak.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Um, so uh, the answer is yes. Uh, it, the demographics are showing that, aren't showing that much growth. Um, uh, if I couldn't, I'm still trying to get, I'm, I'm looking for a demographic of, of, I was given the demographic of currently how many families use this now, and how many visits there were during the year. Um, but um, we, we need uh, to define, I think it's, it's more Charlie about, um, if you build it, will you increase your programs for, right now, uh, we're sending um, citizens over to, to Dayton, I believe, uh, for the adult daycare. Uh, so the questions would be, if we did build it, would we then take on more programs? Or would we keep the programs of where they're at? So it, uh, it's more of a pro, uh, it's more of a question really about program growth, and if, if the town uh, wants to do that. Uh, I, I think that what, uh, what we did for this study is uh, the size addition that would make the most sense, and add it on in a way that um, you know, uh, would not be putting, you know, good money to bad, and would not, you know, it would make, I'm trying to make as much use of the existing building of anything that's good, such as a building that, uh, such as a, a toilet room that all, already meets handicap code. We already have a kitchen, we already have a freezer cooler. Um, so um, this broad stroke, and remember, this is a broad stroke we took. Um, by the way, uh, the RFQ read that everything was just supposed to be written. Um, uh, the RFQ that I replied to, to do this study, I just didn't feel that words would do it justice. So I took it to this level. I think that a picture's worth a thousand words. I, I, I hope nobody minds that, but also, um, you know, these neatly drawn plans with the computer, you know, it makes it look like this finished product when you look at it. This is really just about ideas. Um, you know, it's an idea drawn to scale in a floor plan. It's, it's just as a starting point. Now, I would like, um, I was expecting to meet with more uh, committees and boards, and um, that hasn't happened. The first meeting I, uh, that we got, um, there was uh, uh, just people from the COA board, and um, uh, and uh, Jeff Chandler, uh, the building official was there. Um, I'm open to meeting with more boards, and making sure that we are planning, uh, you know, we should have at least a fifty-year plan. And anybody who could, if we have any demographics on, on where we think we might be, and defining if we are gonna increase programs, if we increase building size, that would be very helpful.
So Andy, I can check with Serp had for um, demographics. I'll look at them right away. Um, also, I think that the building committee's gonna have a meeting and go over all these options, and also um, some of the other discussions that we've had. Um, the schools, the police station, they're all built out for the future, like Charlie had indicated, so, and their fifty-year plans. So um, you know, if we go with uh, option number one, um, there's probably very little to go back to the well for. Um, I, I think that's only gonna take a hit one time. So I think we have to be careful and look at all the options, but um, I would recommend that um, and app, invite you to the building committee meeting in the future, probably within the next two weeks. Are you guys good with that? Charlie?
I'm good, Willie.
Okay, Paul, Charlie?
Um, just so you're aware, uh, the first full week in May, I wouldn't be available.
Okay.
So like, from uh, May third till May twelfth.
Okay.
I, I would welcome that opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, Andy. I think that, um, talking about the library and um, you know, everything. Um, I, I just haven't heard from the COA. Uh, what are their thoughts?
Well, but sitting here, kinda overwhelmed at, at the project. We, we're not dissatisfied with it. I mean, that's, it's a very good project, but I think we really kind of uh, got away from what we were intentionally and what we brought to town meeting last year, a year ago. Our intention was just to put a twenty, twenty, twenty foot by a twenty-four foot addition on. Uh, and it, like I said, we came with a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar approach, and. And I would like to see, I really didn't expect this study and I don't think we did here at all. But, uh, I mean, we're not dissatisfied with it, believe me. And if you want to go to town, town meeting and put in a $3 million project for the senior center, then I think that's a good idea. The Board of Selectmen should entertain that with a little more study. But it isn't what we requested and what we asked for and what we thought was going to be today. Now, with that being said, I would like to see Andy make up a, some sort of a study on what exactly we proposed, uh, what we were thinking, because I don't believe he, he knew what we were, we were asking for initially when he met here. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that meeting. But, uh, with that, just, and Andy, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot here. But, uh, if we just added the food storage distribution room onto this building, second floor and first floor, what does that do to this whole project? Does that put it into the, into a lesser requirement as far as the codes go?
Well, what you would have to do is, uh, if, if you were going to focus on a smaller project and not, trying not to kick it into full accessibility compliance, you would have to, um, uh, come up, uh, get the state, get the Massachusetts Architectural Board. By the way, you can apply, you can, um, have hearings with the MAAB up in Boston. I've gone there many times, um, to ask for many things. What, uh, right now, alls we have to go by is the assessed value, which would give you 60, $68,000 to spend before you get kicked off into the big, uh, threshold. So, um, you would want to get the, the value of the structure up. But you know as well as I do, um, if this building burned down, you couldn't rebuild it for $207,000.
Right. But I guess my question, my, my question was that.
That would, that'd be the way to attack it.
Yeah, I, my, my, my question, Andy, was that it, it, all we, all we intended was to extend this front section out. And, uh, that's what we were looking for. I, I, and I, everything you had talked about, the whole proposal was fine, but, uh, yeah.
So my, my answer, my answer is if you, uh, if you spend the 500,000, you have to bring the whole building into full compliance.
Well, I don't know what that is. And then you, you made a good case here when you did this proposal here of telling us what we had to do on everything else. But, you know, I, I really did, I, I'm really surprised that we wrote this route with this here, but I'm glad we did because it's for future use, I guess, because.
Well, that way, what, and the other thing I want to make clear, I think there was some confusion that I'm presenting the final report. I'm not, Bruce.
What's that?
I'm not presenting the final report today. There's some confusion about that. There's, there's still a lot more work to do and, uh, I, I need feedback. And I'm, I'm going to take it to the next level and I'll, I'll meet with anybody and, and any committee. I'm, I'm more than happy to do that and I'll take it to the next level. This is a starting point. And what this, what this does is now I'm completely familiar, uh, with the existing building and its, and its facilities and somewhat familiar with what I could get out of the one meeting and what I read about the COA program. I'd like to build more on that. And, um, I will address any concern or any question from any committee and take it further.
Well, if the Board of Selectmen wants to go forward with this project, I guess we're not, you know, we're not, we're not going to be upset about that. But I mean, our, our original intent was to get, uh, 500, 500 to 600 additional square foot on the first floor and the second floor, so we could, you know, distribute, uh, uh, services better. And, and we come up with this, which is fine. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, uh, saying this is bad or anything like that. I think it's a good, good project. But again, it's not what we originally, like if, if, if you knew, if you, I don't think anybody, I don't think you asked anybody, what, what did we go to town meeting to try to do? And my, my thoughts was that you were going to take what we went to town meeting to do and tell us what we had to do to comply with the codes with that. And also in what it would cost for the build out. So, uh, we got two different animals here. We got what we, what we would like as a council on aging and what you would like as a big, big project. And it depends on, I guess, how the Board of Selectmen wants to approach this. But I would like to see what it would take just to put, in your, in your case, you got a 20 by 27, a, a 20 by 27 addition on the front of the building going out, you know, where maybe 20 or 24 feet out. And just open space, that's it. Uh, I understand you need fires, uh, you know, and all that stuff and code, all the code requirements, but I don't think the code requirements would be, uh, as stringent as they are with this build out that you have here now. So.
Bruce, if I'm understanding correctly, right? So if we went out, say we added 500 square feet, at $500 square foot, we're talking about 250 grand right there, right? And which doable, but then you immediately kick in, like automatically, we're going to kick in the requirement for the elevator, which is then taxed on another, what is it, 100 and, or 200?
250.
Right? So now we're at 500 grand there. I mean, I, I, I think it's going to, it's like a slippery slope. I, I see what you're saying, but I think it's going to be difficult to, like, while, if we're going to do it, maybe we should do it for the future. I think as, you know, Charlie Sullivan was saying, which kind of makes sense, too.
Oh, well, that's the case, what I just said. Uh, if the Board of Selectmen wants to put an article on a warrant for $3 million, then, then that we, we, you know, that's, that's the way it's going to go. But it's not what we were asking originally.
I hear you.
We were asking for an addition of, uh, roughly 500 and some square feet. And, and that was it. And now we're into the, uh, you know, a, a bigger 3,418 and with the cooler. So, I mean, that's, we, we got the, we got $550,000 already in the coffers. We've already got that. The townspeople voted for that a year ago. Here we are a year later. So, I mean.
No, I hear you.
So that's, that's, that's not what we're tasked to do by the RFQ. Um, which, you know, I, I want to make this a useful exercise for all the committees. So in response to what you're saying, Bruce, we could certainly draw out the scheme you're talking about with the information we already collected. And that can be circulated and discussed, just like these other schemes. Like I said, this, we're not presenting a, a finished study. This is a meeting to discuss, uh, findings to date.
Andy, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, uh, Bruce has 500, or the students have 500,000. If they utilize that money, does that automatically kick them into making the entire, entire building compliant? That's the way I understood what you said earlier.
Uh, yes, uh, I, what, like I said, it, it, it's, it's very simple. It's, if, if you spend $100,000.
Yes.
Or more than 30% of the cash value.
So that 500,000, if they were to spend that, it's automatically going to mean that the building has to be compliant. That's all I wanted to get at.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Andy, Andy, my question, my question is this. How much of the, would this whole thing have to be done because of, of the 500 square feet? Because you do have, uh, you know, the, uh, other code compliances. Would there be as many code compliances with 500 square feet than there is with what you're proposing here, I guess?
Uh, I, I would have to say no. I would say your biggest challenge, uh, uh, would be the, uh, Architectural Access Board would be your biggest challenge.
Okay.
Like you could do your 500, uh, and, you know, not redo all the HVAC in the building. Um, you know, you, you, you could, uh, so yes, your, your biggest challenge is, is the Architectural Access Board.
Yeah, ma- maybe like the, the, for the next one of the, a new option would be, you know, what can we get for the money that's been allocated? Right? All in, so if we have 550,000, I think it was, is that we put it on? What can be done for that? I, I like to hear what, what everyone thinks about that.
But he, but I think what he just said, and I don't know, I don't know, there's a lot of talk going on. If you spend $550,000, you're going to kick in. Is that what we're saying?
Yep, and I'm, I'm saying the same thing, so taking that into consideration, right? So maybe.
Let me, let me, let me clarify this a little bit. Gets a little tricky, um, because here's what I said before. If you're trying to avoid full compliance with the, with the Architectural Access Board, the first thing you start with is getting an agreed upon number for the fair cash value of the building.
Yeah.
Um, you want to get that up as high as you can. Um, and, you know, because the assessed value is not going to do anything for you. That gives you $70,000 to spend, right? No, uh, when, which, what has a separation that can be made here is, you know, the elevator, if, if you can come up with a project that doesn't kick you into full accessibility, then you don't have the cost of the elevator at $200,000, um, for instance. Now, having said that, um, uh, I don't think it looks too good to have a COA that's non-compliant with MAAB. If you're spending, uh, uh, quite a bit of tax money, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. And that's my opinion.
Bruce, Bruce.
Yes.
Are you at all looking at option one? I mean, so, I mean, way back when, when we were first talking and I was thinking it was going to cost 1.5, wasn't that far off, um, and you went and you got the 500. And my thinking was at that point, you could probably take the million out of capital stabilization and do the 1.4 and be done without having to go back to, you, you just have to take it out of capital stabilization.
I thought, I thought he said it was 3.0.
No, that's for a new building. I'm just talking about the renovated COA with the addition.
The new building? A whole new building for 3.0?
1.
3.0, that, the 3.1 is not the, just the renovation, the modification that existed.
Yes, so I'm asking you, so go back to option one, please. So the one point, this, this option one, right, with the kick out in the front, with the gathering room and the food storage, with all the renovations and the elevator, that's 1.4. Are you happy with that?
I'm looking at this drawing here and I'm, oh, okay. All right, I see, that's the bottom, that's.
That's the bottom, and then you can go to the top. So this is what I would, and maybe we can have another, maybe we can have another joint meeting. But if you guys had your meeting and go over all of this, the renovated COA with the addition, to really soak this all in and understand it, you're going to be getting approximately, I don't want to, uh, what's a total square footage addition? Um, 2589? Extra?
Great, yes.
Okay, so you're going to be getting another almost 2,600 square feet extra, all upgraded with the addition for 1.4. I'm just asking you, if you guys could just talk about that and see, you could probably take the 1 million out of capital stabilization and be done with it. The other, the other thing is, is that while it is being renovated, if it's renovated during the summer, you could probably use a Freetown Elementary School, because there's no school there, and use some of the classrooms there to at least have some of your programs. That's just, I'm throwing it out there, maybe you guys can meet and talk about it.
And then this conversation before, and I don't think, I don't think that any of us are objecting to that. I, I think that the thing is that, um, I, I'd want to look back at the, at the, at the drawing again. So you're talking about, you're talking about the, just the gathering function day room, uh, the lobby area, the elevator, the, and, and the food store. That, that's what looks, that looks like it's coming out.
That, no, all the, yep, all the front of the building, so the front of the building is going to be done, all recited, all the in, it looks like there's, um, you know, some of the handicap bathrooms are going to be increased. It looks like there's a, on the upstairs is a, a middle room right there. Looks like the recreation room is a little bit bigger. You have a private consult room.
You're talking about, you're not talking about doing the, the whole reception area, is that all the same?
All, all of that is included in the 1.4. Everything you see here is 1.4.
Really?
Everything.
Well, I misunderstood that because I thought it was, I didn't, I didn't realize that the, the 3.1 was a, a brand-new building.
Yeah, the 3.1 is a brand-new building. This is everything you see, top and bottom, siding, everything for 1.4. You already have 550, you'd have to go back to town meeting for another million, take it out of capital stabilization, which is there. And then you would, you would be done, like that would be what is that? I mean, I think you guys should sit down and talk about it, but I'm trying to, I, I want to, I'm trying to understand what you're understanding. And look, you have a new vestibule, both of them, like everything upgraded.
Okay. I, I, I think we, we'd like to get a copy of these drawings, come back to, we'll meet, we'll meet again next week, uh, our next meeting and talk about it. I think, I, I think we probably would like to see this. But again, we would like, you know, again, uh, keep in mind, what we wanted is, is a lot less than what you're proposing.
I understand, but if you're going to do this and, and you need to do it the right way and you have to put the elevator in, it's not that much money when you look at it. 1.4 is not that much money to get what you're getting. It, so.
So let me ask you this question. We don't want to lose what we have. If we go to town meeting for another million dollars and the taxpayers and townspeople don't want to do that, wouldn't do that, we still have the $500,000 to put the addition on the front to give us more room for services. That's my question.
Yeah, you're not going to lose that. It's that, that town meeting vote is that town meeting vote.
Okay. Yeah, I know, okay, that's fine. But, uh, I, I just don't want to lose the 550 because I, I still, listen, we, I think we will go along. We, we, we agree that this is a great layout for us with what we got. But the point is that if we don't get this, we don't want to lose that extra space that we got to 500. But, you know, again, with what Andy was talking about, about the codes, we need to know if that bump out that we want is going to trigger a lot of different things and what those costs are going to be. So I, I really would like to have him look at what we were proposing initially and see what that would cost. Because if that's over the 550 with some of the codes that he was talking about, then we could go to town meeting for the, uh, the difference, you know what I'm saying? But don't lose this. I guess I'm putting that right.
Yeah, well, well, uh,
Guys, I got to cut out, I have an, uh, I have a, uh, presentation for my real job. Um, but, uh, Bruce, anytime you want to talk about it, I think you guys should meet, talk to Andy and come up with a plan. I think the building committee needs to meet within the next two weeks and, um, uh, Andy, I think this is an exercise, um, that I'm very grateful that you did. Um, this is the one thing that I think needed to be shown to everybody, what can be done and can't be done with the money that, that is available to the town and, um, and spending good money, um, and going after good things. So thank you so, so much. We'll be in touch.
You're welcome. One, two things before you go, Lisa. Thing number one is the magic number here is $100,000. If you spend over $100,000, you're doing, um, the accessibility code upgrades.
Right, and I think that that's what Bruce needs to understand and.
It's $100,000 or 30%, whichever is more. So $100,000 is the magic number here. And the other thing is, uh, you know, these are not prices you can go to the bank with yet. We would have to take this further. It's a good starting point, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't be talking around town about 1.4 million.
Nope.
Before this goes further.
I, I totally agree and I, and I think, um, I look forward to having you come to the building committee meeting. And, um, Bruce, just keep that in mind, right? That 68 to 100,000, once you spend that, that's when it kicks in everything else. So, um, I just want to make sure that you understood that, um, and that, that comes from Andy. Um, peace, everybody, bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Andy, I have a question about, uh, outfitting the building. Does any, does this, uh, these estimates include furniture and stuff like that?
No, uh, these estimates do not include FFNE furniture and equipment.
Could you add that into, on, as a side piece to, to the estimate?
Yeah, I could. But again, I'm, I'm getting a little uncomfortable here about these numbers. It, that wasn't the purpose of these original numbers. We can't, we're not even close enough to make a distinction of whether furniture might be included in that number or not. Um, nor was it a purpose of the original. Nor was it a purpose of the original study. I'm glad to take this further under the study. I'm, I'm all in. But I, I'm, I'm getting uncomfortable about talking specific about costs. We're not there yet.
Understood.
And Bruce, does it also include like the chapter 149 costs and all that sort of stuff? Well, this falls under chapter 149. Okay. Yes. Yeah, you have no choice. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we have to go into 149. If not, we could break ground tomorrow. Me and Bruce could get out there with some hammer.
I think, Mike, do you have a question?
I just wanted to check, since Lisa has gone, I'm not sure the building committee actually has a quorum anymore.
Well, we're not gonna take a vote, Mike.
Well, we just, we'd have to adjourn. We could stay and continue to talk, but we'd have to adjourn our meeting if we didn't have a quorum anymore.
How many do we need for a poll?
I believe if the list of members on the website is correct, I think eight, and I think we'd now have seven.
I think we're pretty much done. I think we, you know, we have to schedule a meeting, another meeting of the building committee anyway.
Yeah, remember, this is not the end. We're not presenting our final report here. This was a meeting.
Andy?
Yeah.
Bruce here. Can, can you get us a, a copy of this presentation, drawings, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and give it to Barbara, and then we can, we can meet and just talk about it. And maybe we'll have you, if we could have you come in and just answer some of our questions.
Absolutely. That's what I was expecting. So, yes.
So Mike, if you want to adjourn the building committee meeting, you can do that.
Um, well, why don't, why don't we, yeah, yeah, I could do that. I would make a motion then that the building committee adjourn for lack of a quorum and still stay and, and chat, but just as Paul said, as Paul Sadek said, not make any, any decisions or anything of that nature.
I'll second that.
I would, I.
I, I'll go with I, but I don't know how much more we have to talk about here.
Right.
Till we have more of a grounded in, on information. I think we've kind of beat this horse in tonight.
I agree, Charlie. All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Luann, do we have to take roll call on this? I don't know how that works. Michael might be able to better.
Let's do that. Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Grunwald.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right.
We're adjourned.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. That was great.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.